Caroline Hale, Councilmember.
Troy Tabor, Councilmember.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Councilmember.
Greg Schneider, Councilmember.
Mike Warrington, Councilmember.
Donna Davis.
That's not on. Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
It was better with the sound off.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Jennifer McCoslin, Assistant City Administrator.
J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangas, Director Public Works.
Paula Bab, Deputy City Clerk.
Mark Deiter, City Administrator.
That was awesome. The next item is the invocation. Do we have Reverend Brad Tuggle present? One of our fine folks from the Police and Fire Chaplains Division. Good evening.
Good evening. Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you for this day. We've seen your hand in so many different ways. We thank you for the rain and the change of seasons that reminds us of your sovereignty and power over your creation. Tonight, we pray for these proceedings. We thank you for all of these who serve our city so faithfully. We thank you for their time, for the investment that they make. We pray wisdom over these proceedings and over these decisions. We pray protection over our first responders, and thank you for their dedication as well. We ask your presence to be with us tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I need a magnifying glass for that?
Are these the bid tabs? I do want to inform everyone that our Mayor Ben Lawrence is out of town today, as well as our other council member on vacation. So, we will do without the same. It's my understanding that we can all still vote, and we shall proceed to do so. The next item on the agenda is the public forum, and that is for anyone who wishes to speak on any subject. That we don't have an item already on the agenda. Does anyone here in the audience this evening wish to express any issues on the public forum? Yes, ma'am? No, no, she's blank. Seeing none, we will pass the public forum and head to the acceptance of the agenda. And if I understand it correctly, we have a copy of the agenda, which is on item number 10. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and we also added a consent agenda item. Item number 8.6 today. That was updated your packet, so that's a...
Right, that should be in all of the agenda. So, the agenda would be as stated with the addition of the bid tab on item 10, and item 8.6 on the consent agenda. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
All right, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Greg and a second by Mike to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a presentation from the Andover Senior Center.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Do you want me to sing a tune, see if you can hear me? Listen, I've got to tell you, first of all, I'm not a real formal person, so I'm just going to put it out there the way it is. But I do want everyone to know, this is my, I'm now going into my fourth year of being the Director of the Andover Senior Center. And when I took this position three years, a little over three years ago, I had no clue what I was really getting into. But I have to tell you, this has been probably the most fulfilling job I have ever been a part of, and not just working at a senior center, but in Andover. And so, I just want to tell you guys, this is such an awesome community to be a part of. And today, when I was putting my report together, it's just, I love everything about this community and everybody that's in it. And you guys helped me be able to make our senior center successful. I do have some numbers I wanted to read off tonight. We've been very busy. In fact, we were just talking today about, we are outgrowing our parking lot, which is an issue, and we are outgrowing our activity room. And so, I'm thinking about installing a stairwell in the back of the building and pitching a tent on the top of the roof, and maybe we can hold some of our activities up there. But anyway, to give you some numbers, this is from 2018. In 2018, we had our Andover Health Resource Fair. It was our second resource fair. We had over 100 people attend. We had 26 vendors participating, and it ended up being a really good educational venue for the seniors. We were able to bring in doctors and some registered nurses from Susan B. Allen Hospital, and some of the doctors around the Andover area. And so, our goal for the Health Resource Fair for the last two years is to provide education to those seniors that don't feel like they can make the trip to El Dorado for the Spring Fling, or to make it to Wichita for the big senior fair that they have in Wichita. And so, we've decided we're having our own little health fair right here in Andover, and it's turned out to be really, really successful. In fact, this last one that we had, we actually had people from Wichita, El Dorado, Towanda, Benton, Clearwater, Cheney, trying to think of some of the other little towns pretty far outside of the Andover area that still chose to come over and participate with us. So, it was really good. We also, last year, for our first time, we held an old-fashioned fair. You know, for a lot of the seniors, they have to give all that stuff up. They don't necessarily get to go to the state fair or some of the other county fairs that we have going on. And so, I was visiting with a bunch of the speakers that we have around the senior center, and we decided we're going to do an old-fashioned fair and do the old games that they played way back when. And so, we had over 60 people attend. It was for two hours, four to six in the evening. I had, I think, 20-some vendors that helped me put this together. We cooked hot dogs out on the grill, made homemade ice cream. So, this year, when I sent the email out a couple of weeks ago that we were going to do that again this year, the vendors kind of held me hostage, and now they will only do it if I promise to make the homemade ice cream again this year. So, tough crowd to please, but I'm going to do it, and by golly, we're having that fair again this year. But it turned out really well. Our only problem, again, is we are running into a problem with parking, so we figured out a way to make it work, but it was really good. Also, this last year, I was contacted by WSU, and we now have a physical therapist intern that comes over to the senior center on Tuesdays and Thursday afternoons from 3:30 to 4:30, and they teach a balance class. And it doesn't matter how old you are. We all, as we get older, have problems with our balance. It's just a fact of life. And so, now we have this physical therapist that is coming over. Our class started out with about four or five people. We are now up to about 18 people. So, when we get to 20, we won't be able to take anymore in. But wow, it has been, we haven't even gone a full year with someone from WSU, and we're already almost up to 20. So, that's been outstanding. Also, in 2018, for some of you that has not been in the senior center, when you come in, we have a book at the front. We ask you to sign it. Numbers matter for us, because when we can put down numbers, that helps us when we're requesting our funding by showing how many people we have coming in, how many people we have during lunch, how many people we have for our different events throughout the day. And so, those numbers matter. In 2018, this is an approximate number, because we can't get everyone to sign on the book. A lot of people come in, they don't realize the book's there, and I can't catch them in time. I try. I leap over desks, jump over chairs, and I still can't get to them. But approximately, we had 11,992 people sign in in 2018. That's a lot of people for a little bitty building. But we did really good. I'm very happy with our numbers. Also, through 2018, our meal deliveries went up tremendously. We delivered 1,532 meals in 2018. And for those of you that are not familiar with that, we do, around the Andover area, have people that are not able to get out and about. And so, they contact us. We don't really have a Meals on Wheels in this area, so they contact us. We ask them if they'd like to join the senior center, which is $10 a year. Some of them do, some of them don't. But we do deliver them a meal. It's a suggested donation of $4. And if you've ever looked at our menu in the senior center newsletter, we have great lunches. I know, my waistline shows it every time I stand up. So, we have great cooks and we have good meals. But we delivered, those meals was up, 458 meals from 2017. So, our mail delivery has grown tremendously. At the senior center, we served 5,986 meals. So, you can see, Monday through Friday, I've got kitchen teams, two people each day that go in. Those kitchen teams are members of the senior center that has volunteered to go in and prepare our meals, because really, we don't have the funding to hire a cook to come in. And frankly, we like it the way we're doing it, because it's our members that's going in there and cooking. And so, it's their way of having some ownership in the senior center and feeling like they have value. And trust me, as we get older, we all want to still feel like we have value within our community. So, that's important. One of our most important events that we have, or activities that we have at the senior center is our bingo game on Fridays. And let me tell you, if we're going to cancel a bingo game, you kind of go behind the office door, lock it, and then let them know we are not having bingo today, because you're just pretty much taking your life in your hands. But last year, we had almost 1,300 people attend the senior center to play bingo. We do give out prizes at our bingo games. And I have to say, every month in my newsletter, I put a wish list in there, and usually, it's for bingo prizes. I know people laugh when I put my wants in there for that, but we're looking for canned goods, whether it's vegetables, fruits, homemade meals, like those little microwave meals you can get. I don't remember what they're called, but those. Toilet paper, paper towels, body soap, toothpaste. And you know, sometimes people laugh when I say that. But for a lot of these seniors, that's what they're looking for. And they're looking for it because they're on a limited income. And so, if they can come over and play a free game of bingo and get shampoo for the next month or two, that speaks volumes to them. That's what they're looking for. So, anyway, our bingo games are pretty good. We get some good prizes in there, and I always have people, whether they're members of the senior center or just people throughout the community, that will come in, and they've got prizes that they want to donate. And I love that, because it tells me that we live in a community that truly cares and takes care of each other, and that's important. I don't know if you guys know this or not, but Interim Home Health, they come over every Tuesday and provide free blood pressure checks for seniors. And they're not just free blood pressure checks. They literally have a card for each person that does that, where they track their blood pressures for them. For some seniors, that is the only place that they're getting their blood pressure checked. So, we value the service from Interim. It's free. It's not costing us anything. They come over every Tuesday morning, and they're there from 10 to 11:30. And so, that's an important service that we're providing. But this last year, we had 246 people stop in for blood pressure checks. So, that was wonderful. We also provide a memory cafe. We have changed the name of that this year. It's now going to be called the Fun Seekers. Memory Cafe started out as an event that was being held every Tuesday for people in the beginning stages of Alzheimer's or dementia. But the more we started talking to other people, the more we realized, you know what? We're leaving out a lot of people that are starting to experience some memory problems, but they don't really have Alzheimer's, they don't have dementia, but they're starting to worry about it, that maybe they're getting that, even though they haven't been diagnosed with it. So, we've decided we're opening it up for anybody that wants to come over, and for about an hour, do some brain exercises, whether it's trivia questions or games or whatever, but where they're actively using their brain and thinking and staying active. So, we're changing it to Fun Seekers. But last year, we had 145 people participate in the memory cafe. So, that was very good for us. We've also started a caregiver support group that will be going on during memory cafe on the first Tuesday of every month, because there's a lot of people out here that they are the caregiver. A lot of times, they don't realize that they are the caregiver until they're thick into it, and they wake up one morning, and they're frustrated, because it's like, wow, I am overwhelmed trying to take care of myself and everything I need to do and having me time, and I've got this person who I love, and I'm trying to take care of them. And all of a sudden, they feel like they're in it all by themselves, and they're not. There's a lot of other people out there that's exactly where they're at. And so, we're offering a caregiver support group now. And we're hoping that we can really see that take off this year. We're going to actively be out there promoting that and hoping that we can get this up and going. We had 2,279 people come in, whether it was at lunchtime or our workshops that we have throughout the week, where we bring in a health provider or a person in finance that works one-on-one with our seniors to give them the information, tools, materials that they need to lead a happy, active life, be financially okay, whatever it might be. And so, we bring in all these different providers that do these speaking engagements. And I'm going to tell you, you know, when I go out there and I'm asking these people to come in and speak to our group, they're busy. And I love it that they find time to take out of their busy schedules and come over and spend time with our seniors. That means a lot to me. And so, we really value that, that we have these educational events throughout the year. Let me see, we also have a lady that comes in once a month, and she does foot care. And this last year, we had 75 people come in for that. Now, she does foot care, where she clips the toenails and just cleans her feet up a little bit. And that's important. However, we've got another company that, in the summer, I believe, of this year, they're going to be coming over once every two months, I think it is. And they are specifically focusing on diabetics and their foot care. And we have realized that that is a true need in the senior community in and around the Andover area. And so, we're going to provide that and take care of that. And I'm hoping that that's going to be received well and help a lot of people that needs that care. Also, in 2018, we had 1,247 people attend our fundraiser lunches. If you've not been to one of our fundraiser lunches, the one coming up in March is March 20th. It's Irish Stew. It has been called Irish Coddle in the past, but people like me have no idea what Coddle is. So, we've simplified it up and made it Irish Stew now. But if you've not made it to one of our fundraisers to have lunch, you are so missing out. So missing out. You should come over. $5 gets you the lunch, which is like this coming, this month, it's Irish stew, beer bread, a dessert, coffee, tea, water. If you want a can of soda, that's an extra 50 cents if you can cover that. But they're good meals, you guys. They're really good meals. You should come over and try them. Our Monterey is probably the biggest lunch fundraiser that we do. If it was up to the guys at the fire department and the police department, that is the only fundraiser that we would do, is the Monterey, even though I keep telling them, you guys, you'd get sick of them after a while, and they keep telling me, no, they really wouldn't. I really think they would, but that's just my opinion. But anyway, so we do that, and that's well. Let me see, we do rent out the senior center. In case you didn't know that, we rent that out. The second and fourth Sundays of the month, we rent our center out to a church that uses it all day. The first Sunday of the month, we rent it out to the American Legion for the post here in Andover, so they've got a place to meet. We have people that use it for family reunions, for funeral dinners, for wedding receptions, all sorts of things. So, in 2018, the rental use was up. 1,315 people used that. And it was down a little bit, but it was down because we had lost a church that was renting our facility on the third Sunday of the month. They ended up finding a place here in Andover where they could move in and actually have a place to call their own, and so, we lost those. But we're still doing well with people coming over, looking at the facility and renting it. And that's great for us, because that's extra income for us. We also, once a month, we distribute commodities. And last year, we signed out 193 commodities to seniors that are on a limited income and need the extra help with groceries. And so, that was nice. We're doing that again this year. And it's a great feeling to know that we can help these people be able to have enough food to get through a month and eat. And I'm going to tell you right now, as the Director, you would never, and I didn't realize this until I started doing this job, but we do have a lot of seniors around the Andover area that don't have the money to buy their medicine and eat. And sometimes, I think people have this perception that because we live in Andover, we all have this money, all this money. And that's not always necessarily true. For some of those seniors, they don't. And there's nothing more heartbreaking than having someone sit in my office after asking to close the door, because they want to break down in tears, because they're hungry, and they just want something to eat. And I listen to that several times throughout a month. So, it's nice to be able to help with the commodities. We had the Butler County Health Department and Sam's Pharmacy come out last year. We had 16 members come in and get flu shots. So, that was wonderful that we're doing that. We made an agreement with Susan B. Allen Hospital. They come in every three months and provide discounted lab work for cholesterol screenings and some other tests. At our senior center, it's on a Wednesday morning from 6:30 a.m. till 8 o'clock a.m. I go in in the morning, and I get the coffee going. And usually, we try to have some donuts or something set out, because these people have to fast. And I know, if I was them, I'd be starving to death by the time I got my test done. And so, we try to accommodate that. But I think it's wonderful that Susan B. Allen has been willing to come in and set up their lab and take care of that for us at the senior center. Also, last year, we became more involved with the community as a whole and with the youth around Andover. I've got to tell you, at the city, I think it was twice that we were called and asked to help put together goodie bags. That might not mean a lot to you guys, but I'm going to tell you something. Our members talked about that for a long, long time. They loved it. They loved the fact that they were thought of and asked to help do something. Felicia from the fire department called and asked if they would wrap boxes for the Leadership Butler project that they were doing. They were ecstatic over it. The idea that people outside of the senior center was truly thinking of them and asking them to help spoke volumes to those members. It made them realize, you know what, we are seniors. We don't move as fast as we used to, but by golly, we still have some value within this community. So, thank you for doing that, and keep that up. If something needs to be done, stuffing envelopes or whatever, ask us. They'd love to do it. They love being a part of it. We've now got the schools that call us, and they're asking us if they can bring over youth to help volunteer for an hour or two. We love that. They come in, they help do things around the senior center. They share stories with our seniors, and it's great to see that interaction. And at the end of the day, it's a great feeling knowing that those seniors walk out of there and realize there are still people out there that are interested in them and what they have to say. Let me see, we also are providing tax services for seniors. We did this last year, two days a week. This year, we're doing it three days a week, because last year, we were overwhelmed. We had so many people and not enough time. This year, it's still crazy. We're doing it Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We have several people that's coming in. But for a lot of seniors, to be able to come in and get their taxes done for free, it means a lot. It means a difference on if they can get all their medication this month or some of their medication this month. So, we're doing that. We also are still doing our jam sessions. The third Monday of every month, we do a jam session from 7:00 to 9:30 p.m. We bring in a live band. The lunchroom turns into a dance floor, and yes, people are out there dancing. But it is awesome, and they are loving it. We play cards two nights a week. They have card playing going on at the senior center. So, you can see, we are slowly going from just being a daytime senior center to also having events in the evening and some on the weekends. The only other thing that I wanted to share with you is we do a newsletter, and in the newsletter, I put all the different activities that we're doing. I put in all the speakers and what the topics are about. I emailed this newsletter out to over 350 people right now. And hard copy-wise, for those seniors that can't or don't know how to get on the computer and pull this up and get it, I probably go through 150 hard copies in a month. And just to give you an example, last week, I think it was on March 6th, I put out 100 newsletters, and when I came to work on Monday morning, I had none left in the easel. So, they go like hotcakes. But if you know someone that is a senior or interested in the senior center, let me know. Give me an email address. We'd be more than happy to send it out to them so that they can see what's going on. And if they'd like to come over, they're more than welcome to do so. That's all I've got. Do you have any questions for me?
Sure, thank you. You've covered everything except for the fact that you're Sonya Drake, and you are the Director of the...
Oh, yes. I'm Sonya Drake, and I'm the Director.
Okay. That was a wonderful report. It's so nice that we have somebody with such enthusiasm and a desire to maintain and improve the senior center. And it's wonderful to see you do that, and we hope that you get improvements every year. And I hope to make it out. I promise I will make it out soon as I become a senior.
Deal. Deal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was wonderful. Okay, item number eight, the consent agenda, where we have added items eight through one through eight through seven. Anybody have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve consent agenda items 8.1 through 8.7 as presented.
Second.
We've got a motion by Greg and a second by Mike to approve the consent agenda items eight through one through 8.7 as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, the city's property and liability insurance for 2019, 2020. We have another distinguished speaker?
Yeah, thank you. Dusty Davis with ICI Insurance. It's great to hear that presentation about the senior care. It sounds like they're doing great things for your community, and to hear something like that go on is very impressive. So, ICI, we're pleased to present the renewal proposals from Travelers and VFIS for the 2019-20 Property Casualty Insurance Program for the city of Andover. If you recall, last year, this time, the city decided to move coverage from EMC to Travelers. Couple reasons. I, very significant savings on this, improved some coverages that we looked at overall, but found some value in doing that. At the same time, a few months ago, January 1, we were able to move the coverage from K-Met for the work comp to Travelers as well. Both of these, I mentioned, result in significant savings for the city, also some additional loss control and resources that we were able to bring to the city at that time. So, with that, Travelers has been very, very, very happy with the overall results for the city over the last year for the package portion of this insurance program. With that, we're also to provide the very competitive work comp program, January 1, too. So, it all kind of snowballed, and it's worked out really well for the city. With that, we, Travelers is, the overall package renewal is up, mainly due to exposure increases across the board. Didn't really go into too much detail on that. On the property side, we've increased limits by over a million dollars a year from last year. This did some upgrades to the water... This did some upgrades to the water treatment plant, added some playgrounds, additional personal property limits, things like that for that increased exposure there. Same goes for the inland marine. This is the equipment the city owns. Over two hundred thousand dollars with equipment was added at that point. Another, probably the biggest area where we've seen some change is we've added over six autos, six units from last year. Autos, one area that we continue to see all our companies struggle with and look to get some rate increases across the board on majority of the auto that's out there. Travelers is a little different on how they look at their autos. So this is a true reflection from last year to this year. They do composite rating, so they don't charge for the autos that were added during the current term at this point until the, until the end of this term. So that's when they'll turn around and, and charge a fifty percent value for those vehicles. So with that added, like I said, there's six vehicles that were added throughout the year. We did have some expenditures increases on the general liability. So overall, everything from a true rate standpoint was pretty minimal for what Travelers are looking at. Most of this is due to basically exposures increases that the city experienced throughout the last year. VFIS, they're the specialty carrier that we have for the fire department. And we have, we've used them for many, many years now. They basically just write for fire departments. And with the coverage that we have for that are the fire trucks, all the fire equipment that we have, and the umbrella that's included on this. So overall, it shows about an eight percent increase from last year with the, with the both packages on that. Throughout the time we've worked with the city on, on these changes, the different departments, Jenny and Mark, we'll work with the safety committee each month and, and work through any of these issues and, and solutions throughout the year on, on the insurance program. So you can see the information there that shows the, the premium renewal for both VFIS and Travelers. Be happy to answer any questions or go through anything else that we need to.
Any questions for Mr. Davis?
Yes. Just a little clarification, if I'm understanding correctly. While there was this increase, it seemed to me as though you were also indicating that there were additional things that we were covering this year that had not been covered before. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that's true. It's basically the, like the changes on the property, we've, the water treatment plant had some upgrades, so that values increased. Some personal property limits were increased as well. The equipment.
Something about playgrounds. So I don't know if there's some neighborhood playgrounds that were included or what would that be, playgrounds?
I believe we upgraded some playground equipment last year, so that is now worth more than the lower valued equipment it replaced.
Okay, so that's totally, that's equipment, not necessarily liability?
Right.
Okay.
Right, yes. The two hundred thousand, I believe you referred to was equipment purchased.
That was equipment. A new backhoe was purchased, things like that, so.
Well, I was just thinking about, yes, that's an increase, but it sounds like if we're also expanding things that we're covering, then that would be expected.
Exactly. Yeah, that's basically kind of what, what I was talking about with the exposures. There's just additional equipment and property and limits and all that that contributed to that increase, so.
Thank you.
Correct.
Very good. Dusty, I don't know of any other questions. I believe that the summary and so forth is very consistent with what Jenny has assisted, negotiated, and so forth, and looks to be fair and reasonable.
Mr. President, are you ready for a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I, I move to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty property and liability insurance policies with Travelers and VFIS as outlined in the executive summary in the amount of one hundred sixty thousand, two hundred forty dollars.
Second that.
All right, we have a motion by Caroline, and we got a second by Troy to approve the two thousand nineteen, twenty property liability insurance policies in the amount of one hundred sixty thousand, two hundred forty dollars with Travelers and VFIS. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I guess you can go out and play another eighteen holes of golf.
Yeah, I think we'll try to get that in, so. We appreciate everything you do guys for us and we appreciate our relationship we have with the city, so.
Nice job. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Item number ten, Lafayette Herman Project, paving and drainage bids to be opened on day of meeting. That'd be tonight. Mr. Steve?
Mr. President, Steve Anderson, city engineer. Please to report the results of our bid opening this morning. We had three bidders. Pearson Construction Company LLC was the low bidder. And I'll get into the details of the bid in a minute, but I'd like to give you a little brief history and then an expectation of what's to come. ASM is here. Larry McLean is the design engineer with us tonight to answer any technical questions. We began this shortly after you authorized the project, I think last April, sometime last spring. In the meantime, we've done plans, secured approvals, acquired right away, and moved utilities for about four months. And so now's the appropriate time to bid. If I could say so, this project is very different than a project we build in a new subdivision in a pasture. We're going to go in and build water line and streets and storm drainage in a neighborhood of sixty people that want to come and go several times a day. So would you plan on receiving some phone calls and complaints over the next six months? I'm sure that they won't be limited.
It turns over to the Chamber of Commerce.
I think you know what I mean. It's a, it's a different kind of project. The last one we did like this was in two thousand ten before I came, Mike and Main Street. And it's just a nasty, messy process. We've got lots of controls, notices, different ways of minimizing the disruption, but it's just difficult to go in and do that. So appreciate your patience in the future. Pearson Construction was the low bid. That is a new name in, at least in Andover, as far as construction of paving projects go. It's not a new name at all in terms of the people doing the work. And what's happened is in the last fifteen years or so, we've had, shall we say, mergers and acquisitions in the local paving business. And so what, what was Cornejo is now, no, what, help me out, Les. It was Ritchie's, La Farge, then Cornejo, and then Cornejo sold, but the name stayed. And Cornejo's went and acquired Pearson. Are you confused yet? You get my point. Anyway, the Cornejo people are now at Pearson, formerly excavating, now construction, paving, and whatnot. I say that because oftentimes you ask what the, what the quality of the contractor is, and, and we have a high level of confidence in their financial standing and their management and in the people able to do the work. So I don't have any problem recommending them as the low bidder. Brief note on the structure of the contract and the funding. We have two projects, funding wise, a water line project, which will be paid for city at large, and then a paving and drainage project will be split fifty-fifty, city at large and property owners. In terms of the bids of those parts, at the, the top of your bid tab, the engineer's estimate was two hundred and thirteen thousand for the water line. Our low bid is a hundred and seventy-four thousand, so we're about forty thousand dollars underneath. One of the things we expect on these messy projects is some change orders along the way. So we have some cushion between the low bid and the engineer's estimate for that. The paving, low bid, six hundred and sixteen thousand in round numbers is a hundred and six thousand dollars under the engineer's estimate. Same thing there. We have some room for change orders, but at the end of the day, the assessments will be based on the money that's actually spent, not the maximum allowable in the petition. So this is good news both to the city at large and for those assessed for the project. I think that covers my comments. The total of those two parts of the project with an addendum comes to seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, six hundred and six, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. So should you opt to approve this, your motion is laid out with that dollar amount.
Thank you. Any questions of Steve Anderson?
I just have a question. If, if the motion's made tonight, would it still be for the mayor to sign or would you be able to sign it?
We're two weeks before we're ready to sign.
Oh, okay.
We'll let the mayor sign.
Okay. Because I would entertain a motion if no one else had anything else to add.
Oh, the only thing that I would have to add on here is, obviously, I'm still not in agreement of the whole fifty-fifty split between the, the benefit district. I do see that this is a low bid and I do approve that, but I still think we need to look at how we're splitting this. And, and since we are wanting all the streets in Andover to be paved in some manner, I think that that should be more on the city's behalf.
Your points were very well taken, Mike. I think we have passed that issue and voted on that previously on this project.
We have.
Okay. As, as I firmly believe that Mike's issues are very important and we need to take those into account as we head down the road, but it's not relevant today. You have a comment there, counselor?
Just that we have a motion without a second, and I wanted to make sure.
Right. We, we actually haven't finished the motion yet.
No, I just looked over and saw Mike wanted to say something, so I paused for a minute. But I'll happily read my motion now, if that's okay. All right. Make a motion to accept a low bid from Pearson Construction LLC, formerly a lot of things, Wichita, Kansas, for water line, paving, and drainage improvements along Lafayette East, Wagoner, and Herman Streets, including the alternate, alternate bid, all east of Andover Road, and not to, in an amount not to exceed seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Greg to accept the low bid from Pearson Construction LLC for the improvements as noted in the motion in an amount not to exceed seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-three dollars and fifty cents, and authorize the mayor to sign such a contract. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Good job. We now have to amend some ordinances of the fine city of Andover. Item number eleven, code of the city of Andover repealing certain sections. Who would be in charge of explaining what this one is?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think I'm going to pass this on to JT since he did basically all the heavy lifting on this one.
And he's, he's going to pass it on to Steve Anderson?
Mr. President, this is the necessary ordinance the city will need to pass in order to accommodate the change in law that will allow grocery and convenience stores to sell the equivalents of beer beginning April first. And so this uses a theory that was concocted by the Kansas League of Municipalities to define a term called enhanced cereal malt beverages. In order to keep all your code provisions the same, where the term cereal malt beverage was used, we changed it to enhanced cereal malt beverage, which will now include beverages fermented from malt but have an alcohol content of less than six percent by volume, as opposed to three point two percent by weight. For most of you, this means that the universe of, of one kind of beverage that, that, that is more commonly known as beer will be sold at both liquor stores and convenience and grocery stores. It will be the same product. I think it's important to note that the grocery stores will collect retailer's sales tax on it, and the liquor stores will collect liquor tax on it, even though it's the same product. The, the taxes will be different. Some have theorized that, that if that ultimately results in more people buying beer from a grocery store, that that could increase the city's retailer's sales tax collections. But we have no formula approved for that, so I think you should consider it, at least at this point, as a revenue neutral proposal necessary to comply with state law, which will take effect on April first. I'd be delighted to answer any questions.
A question, JT. So is what we're passing, does it exactly mirror the state's law?
Yes. In fact, the, we've taken numerous occasions where we just refer to the definition as defined under state law in order to make sure that, from a law enforcement standpoint, our law matches the state law perfectly. And so to be clear, we really don't have any choice in that matter. The state law says that it is intended to be universally applicable to all cities and that cities cannot change it or make it either different or more difficult, that, that it is a universe by which the state has decided it's going to control the law.
Okay, so I guess a thought, and it'd be a discussion later perhaps, but when there's a law that we're required to put into our ordinances that actually is just a mirror image of the state laws, I wonder if we would want to entertain not having the content at all in ours other than a reference, although I think that eventually that could be a mess with our home rule abilities maybe. I'm only thinking in the future if the state tries to co-opt other things besides just this, that they, it would make it a lot easier for them if they didn't have to go in and overwrite every single municipality's laws. I know it's more of a state philosophical thought, but anyway, I see that you wanted to say something, so what, what were you thinking?
I, I think it's a very good point. I want to tell you what I think the difference is. And I also want to tell you one additional change we made to the ordinance, because I thought it was legally required that I didn't think of until you brought that up just now. It used to be that the city code empowered the police chief to revoke a cereal malt beverage license upon a perceived violation of the law. And state law doesn't allow that. It allows the governing body to revoke a cereal malt beverage license, so I changed that so that it reads like the state law, because I'm, I'm not precisely sure that that is an allocable power that you can give away. So it just dawned on me when you said it, it, it reads identical, and I, I really do believe to the extent I can make it, it reads identical. So to answer your question, the difference is if we want to charge these in municipal court for violations as opposed to the police charging people in district court in Eldorado, that's the reason why you want a local law on this. And so certainly most minors and other people, when they offend the law, find it to be convenient to be charged in municipal court as opposed to be charged by the district attorney in district court. And so that's really the only reason you'd want to have local liquor laws, because it allows your police department to enforce violations under municipal law that would otherwise be charged as in criminal court and, in district court.
So does there, is there a mechanism that if the same law exists here as it does in the state, that they couldn't be double charged both locally and in the state since it's violating both essentially?
Yes, the constitutional principle called double jeopardy, for which there's a very good movie, where you cannot be charged for the same crime twice.
Okay. Thank you.
Now that this is clear as mud, by the way, excellent job. Did you have a comment sometime?
No, sir.
Very good. All right, we have an ordinance relating to the new definition of legalized beer. And do we have anybody interested in proposing a motion?
I, I will move to adopt an ordinance amending Article One, Chapter Three of the Code of the City of Andover, Kansas, to allow the licensing of retailers to sell enhanced cereal malt beverages.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike to adopt the CMV ordinance as presented. Further discussion?
I'll, I'll throw something out there. So a while back, I ran for state, you know, whatever. And I will say that this issue was the number one issue that all the lobbyists and everybody were talking about and pushing me and I'm sure anybody I was running with were against at the time. It was interesting how many people were talking about this exact issue. So it's interesting that it's kind of fruition and that it's finally happening. So it's interesting that it's came to fruition and, um, that it's finally happening.
Very good. I appreciate that information. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. It's amazing.
Thank you.
Item number twelve, we have some further amendments relating to building and construction, something to do with noise.
Yes, and more noise than building and construction, but that's the section it's in in your city code. Um, we really probably should have done this a year ago before we opened the amphitheater, but hindsight's twenty twenty. Um, we, I would note, we did not receive any official complaints in regard to breaking our noise ordinance, but after a lot of fireworks in September, staff started thinking we should go read that a little more closely um, and make sure that we did make an exception for city-approved events to not be within the noise ordinance requirements. I think it, it's pretty logical and goes with understanding that if you build an outdoor entertainment venue with noise amplification speakers brought in, that it's going to be loud. But your ordinance didn't allow it previously and with this change it would. Any questions?
Very good. Questions?
Would this, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna mention that there, this is, uh, the first perhaps, but I know that I think the design source had mentioned about putting an outdoor, uh, entertainment area, um, as well as, uh, what's gonna go in at, uh, the heritage. So would this cover those two or is it just this, is it us or I mean what?
I believe the way we worded it was events approved by the city of Andover. So I suppose if they were going to come and ask for that approval, that would be something you could consider. Um, that wasn't the thought when the ordinance was prepared, but we did leave it vague enough to say events approved by the city council with the thinking that maybe one year we host something like NFA in the Thirteenth Street Sports Park. So we don't wanna say Central Park or we don't wanna say at the amphitheater because there may be something else. So we did leave it a little bit, um, vague, but did require your approval or the city's approval for the event.
Mike, you have a comment?
Yes. Is there a, a board that would approve this or, you know, let's say we did ha- want something at Thirteenth Street Park or in the parking lot of a grocery store? I mean, uh, let's say, um, some, the Rotary Club wanted to have something at, in a parking lot somewhere. Um, w- would that come to the city council or would that just be approved in, internal?
That, that's the way I interpret it, that, that city-approved would be anything the city is officially sponsoring either through resources, um, financial or staff. Or if they ask your permission, then I would say that it's, it's city-approved or city-sponsored event. But if, if you don't know anything about it.
Yeah.
I think it's fair to say that's not city-supported and the attorney's pulling is Mike, so I'm gonna be quiet.
So if Mark wanted to have a big party or something going on, then he could just come in and ask for approval?
That is not exactly the, um, example I was going to use, but yes. Um, if, if, if say for instance, he wanted to have his thirtieth, uh, thirtieth, uh, birthday party, uh, coming up this year and, yeah, um, if, if, if he wanted to have that, uh, as a block party or, or maybe more appropriately, a homeowners association wanted to have a block party and wanted to have a DJ and wanted to have loud music, that was going to violate the noise ordinance, that would have to be approved by the city of Andover before it would be okay. And as far as I know, uh, other than the kind of, uh, event approval process for the amphitheater, th- there, there really is no other body other than the governing body, those would have to come here for approval. I think it's a very good question.
Does this all, um, just, does this also go on the time limit for the noise ordinance as well?
In my opinion, it except, it exempts city-approved events. So if you go past the night time, that would also be accepted or exempted, however you'd say that.
So really the whole gamut of the noise ordinance has a series of exemptions and this would exempt you from that, both as to, uh, time and decibel level as currently drafted.
I will predict that Mike is more correct than some of the others on the unintended consequences of this ordinance, but I believe it's necessary for what we know today. But I, I bet you, you're more right a- and we're gonna have to clean this up in some fashion that today we don't know what it is, but your point's very well taken in that regard. Further comments?
Well, I was just going to say we, we really already do this with people all the time that wanna do a firework display or something and they come, it's not on the Fourth of July, it's New Year's or whatever. So it's a similar thing that we've already granting people and it does come from the governing body. So it doesn't really seem much different than what we're already doing in other areas, but, you know, parallel.
Very good.
Before we proceed, Mr. President, uh, Les has pointed out to me in answer to Mr. Warrington's question, there is another body. Uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals has some authority to grant variances from the sound level for what would be, um, lawful uses as to occupation as it relates to the volume level. So it is possible as a matter of zoning for a anticipated use that someone could seek a variance from the existing noise ordinance as a matter of zoning through the Board of Zoning Appeals. And I think it's important that I point that out, cause that is not, that is not then, uh, subject to review by the city council. Uh, in fact, I think most appeals from the BZA go directly to the district court. Uh, but that is existing law and that's the way it is now. And, uh, to give you an example of that, if you were going to have a commercial use that had some sort of a nature of sound that was known to be and would regularly not fall in with one of the exemptions, but would violate the decibel level, the Board of Zoning Appeals under certain conditions could approve that as a variance. Um, I will tell you the standards for a variance are pretty strict. Um, you, you, Les could tell you better than I, I would, but there almost has to be, um, no other suitable use of the property typically for the terms of a variance. Um, and the governing body of the city would not be bound, uh, by those rules for purposes of granting a noise ordinance allowance. And I'll call it an allowance, not a variance, cause variance is a legal term apart. Uh, do you agree with that, Les?
Okay, so it's an either or, so someone could ge- go to the BZA or to the city council and ask for that, but most likely they would just come to the city council.
In, in my opinion, Mike, the key is that the event is just that. It's kind of a one time or a specific time where the variance is more of a long-term variance from that noise.
More than just one day, you're talking about like a week or, or whatever.
Okay, so if I rented or someone rented the amphitheater and had a couple bands come out, currently they don't have to come to the governing body and ask to rent it. They can rent it directly through, I'm not sure who is it, Chastity or Jenny or whomever. So in addition to that, if they have a live band, would they also have to come up here and request a variance on the?
Not a variance, not a.
Or not a variant, I'm sorry, would they have to request a?
That's why we're doing this.
That was not our intention with the ordinance. The intention was if they have a reservation form that the city has signed off on, then that's city-approved. So that, that's my note, that it's a little bit vague, but they've gone through a process at that point. They've shown proof of their insurance, they've, um, met with the event director. If needed, they've met with the police department based on their attendance, things like that. So there's, there's a lot of vetting going through that process.
Okay.
If somebody does not work through the city, just shows up and brings a band and some speakers out to the stage, then that would not be something you've approved and then they would be subject to the noise ordinance.
Okay. I think at some point we'll need to refine it and maybe it's not always appropriate to bring it to the council that it could just be approved in, internal, kinda like a building permit or something. Um, and it may just be the concert committee or I don't know, I mean, uh, just kinda thinking out loud here that, uh, you don't, you know, we don't have to, you know, hear of every, you know, um, uh, road that wants to be closed for a neighborhood party or something.
Again, it's my understanding that once I get the approval to use the amphitheater, this new ordinance would be applicable to the noise factor that I would generate.
Correct.
I, I think that's correct. You've, you've given some pretty broad authority, uh, administrative authority to administer the use of the amphitheater. And it would be my opinion that by granting that authority administratively to the committee that does that, you have, uh, given your approval to the events that are, that are held at the amphitheater. Um, and that was specifically sort of considered by you all as an administrative, not legislative, but administrative manner, matter you wanted handled by staff. I think the amphitheater would be the big exception though. I think if you, if, if you were going to want to do something else at one of the other parks or, or, um, certainly anything on private property that would violate the noise ordinance, you'd have to get city approval. And I think Les did a terrific job of explaining sort of like some kind of compressor plant that's gonna regularly exceed the noise ordinance and thereby needing to seek a variance as opposed to a one-time event like a party or a fundraiser.
Thank you. Further discussion. I guess we're gonna have to have a motion.
Mr. President, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter Four, Article Nine, Section Four dash nine oh four of the Code of the City of Andover, Kansas.
Second.
We've got a motion by Greg and a second by Mike to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
We are all the way down to the most important items of the evening.
Goodness.
Member items, starting with Caroline.
I have no items this evening.
I'll second that. No, I'm just.
It's pretty awesome that Andover Central Basketball Team won state. It's a big achievement. It's pretty cool.
Amen. That is unbelievable.
And then Sonia's presentation earlier and everything that Senior Center's doing is obviously an exceptional jewel for our city. And I'll also throw out that she works diligently with the Chamber of Commerce too. So I'm not exactly sure how she has time to do all that, but it's pretty awesome what she does there as well.
Thank you. Greg?
I second what Troy said. Good job.
I mean, is that it?
It's it.
Okay. Mike?
All right, I'll echo, uh, what Troy also said about the basketball team for Andover Central. And I think that was a great accomplishment, uh, for them. Uh, I did enjoy going to all three of the state, uh, games and it was, uh, pretty exciting. The student section was outstanding. Um, the first two days, they had over a hundred kids there. And the last day, they had over a hundred and fifty for the championship game and this was spring break. So that's pretty cool that they, they showed up and supported their team.
Where, where was that?
It was in Emporist State.
Yeah.
Yeah. I also wanna talk about, um, something we haven't really done as, as long as I've been here is the city council recognizing, um, teams that actually won state. I think that's probably something, I know the school board does, but I think that would be a pretty cool achievement for them to come here and us recognize, uh, the, you know, the team or, and coach for, you know, accomplishing, um, those, uh, great achievements.
I couldn't agree more. I, let's, let's get them out here, whether they like it or not.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Not sure.
Um, there's also some, uh, awards that may be coming up for, uh, Coach Jesse Herman. And I would like to propose that we, uh, have like a Jesse Herman Day, you know, um, maybe for the day that, that they won the championship last Saturday.
Awesome. I, I concur. Is it?
Um, maybe, yes.
I would like to echo that if we can figure out, uh, the proper time and so forth, let's follow up on that.
Uh, maybe next council meeting if that's possible. Yeah, sooner than later. And I also wanted to ask Jenny, uh, how things are going on concert stuff?
I was going to try to pull up Katie's, um, here we go, Katie's, uh, memo. So, um, let's see, she's got, shh, 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 shh. For the first tick, uh, first event, we have sold, let me see, this is kinda confusing cause of the way she's got what's left over or what's not. I'll send you all the ticket sales, how about that, so we don't misquote, but yes.
So we're just kinda going slow right now?
They are going a little bit slow. We're in March and the first event's not until June. So yes, they are, it is going slow. Um, August hasn't even gone on sale yet. It doesn't go on sale until Friday. So that's slow because all you can get right now is a season ticket to go to the August show. But effective Friday, all the tickets, both individual and season tickets will be on sale.
August is the one oh seven three party?
Yes.
Yeah, I've, I've heard them advertising that pretty heavily.
Yeah.
I, uh, wanted to say I appreciate, uh, my fellow council members of being, uh, patient, uh, with me this evening. Wasn't too harmful to most people. Uh, you all have anything else, Mark?
Uh, I just wanted to point, uh, say thank you to our city attorney and our mayor. The Kansas Gas signed off on our franchise agreement and, and Susan had to do some nagging to make sure that happened, but so we've got that squared away. Our neighborhood revitalization plan was also approved and so our builders could now start making application for that. It only took the state less than sixty days, I think. So we're very happy with our city attorney and everybody who was involved in getting that done too. So we've got a couple approvals. Just wanted to, um, mention and, uh, this is probably going on too much about the, uh, five A state champions, but Central is like the second or third smallest school in five A, just went up this year. I would also say that six of those kids went to Sunflyer Elementary School, two others went to Andover Central Middle, another one came over from, from the Trojans and Middle School and played for us. And we had one kid come up from Wichita. I promise you, if you go up and look at Bishop Miege, who we lost to last year, who's in Roland Park, I doubt one of those kids is from Roland Park, Kansas. And, uh, you know, we com- we compete as a public school out here on a pretty limited basis. If you live in A- you have to live in Andover with the exception of a faculty member, uh, coming out here to play at Andover. And I just think our coach who's been here nineteen years and that group of players who grew up in this community have been around this community, it's just a, quite an accomplishment that I think we probably don't have full appreciation. And they've got some guys coming back next year where I think they can threaten to win state again next year. So it's just a great thing for our community and it says a lot about how dedicated those kids have been.
Well, that's great to say and I, I sure think Mike's comments about a recognition here i- is long overdue. And I, I think that's, uh, we'll do a good job on that. With, uh, nothing else, I think that's it, folks. If we have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.